At this time, I will call the special council meeting to order. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which it stands foundation under God, in the visible power of liberty and justice for all.
We're here today to see if we can find funding for the West US 30 Lincoln Way work that Katie, the Highway Department Director, has brought in front of us. I think it would be best at this time that Katie, you present your project to the council.
I apologize that some of you were in the meeting prior to and heard the presentation beforehand, but that'll give the opportunity to ask questions about anything that we missed. And I think Brad has some information to also that he'd like to include. So, the engineering report that I have for you today, and I have a PowerPoint if you guys would like to follow along with that. But what this particular project is for is for Lincoln Way, and it's for the three, almost four miles that is going to be between the Plumby City Limits and 350 West, which is Lorraine. So, we'll go ahead and start with this. So, the primary purpose in need of the project that we talked about here, that we're talking about, is just to invest in the infrastructure of the actual roadway itself. It is in need of really, it's in need of really extensive intervention just because of what's underneath it. But we're trying to find the most feasible way to create the most long-term solution that's going to be of the most financial benefit to the county. So, we talked about the existing facility here. The original surface was only 19 feet wide and has been kind of widened and then overlaid for various years. So, right now, we're looking at a 26-foot-wide roadway, and it has 11-foot lanes. And we don't really have a paved shoulder, we have a stone shoulder. And then, when we look at the traffic counts, the first part from US 30 to 350 West is the busiest area where we have an average annual daily traffic count of 4,800 cars per day. And then, the second half that's going to be between 350 West and Casillas County has an average annual daily traffic of about 2,400 vehicles per day. So, that was kind of one of the things that we used in determining which section we would address first. And we just chose to go with the busier section. And then, this one has a lot more of the visible defects than the second half of the roadway. So, the crash data that we looked at, when the first, I sent you guys a copy of the assessment initially, and that was the first draft that we had before we had all of the collective crash data. At the time, the only thing that we had was what we had received from LTAP. And LTAP is the Local Technical Agency Program. Sorry, I had a little thought bubble pop there. But they are really advocates for counties to be able to find alternate options and resources to be able to do projects and education and things. But they put this together for us. It showed these three hotspots, and at the time, we weren't really sure what those hotspots were related to. But after further kind of investigation into that, after we've received access to areas, those are mostly roadway departure and animal crashes. This is a very rural area, so the fact that we have a lot of animal collisions that are mostly deer is not really surprising. But with these three intersections not being anything that's related to kind of the topographical nature or sight distance related, it actually made this project about $1 million cheaper when looking at what we could do for improvements. So, moving on from that, just some more information about the crash data that we received from LTAP. This goes from 2012 to 2021, and we had a total of 1,929 crashes total, which is about an average of 190 crashes. And this is going to be for the entirety of Woodley County. So, we're pretty high on wet roadway crashes, but you can see that also we have a really high percentage of numerous other areas. But roadway departures are going to be some of the larger percentages that we have. And you'll see that reflected in the graph there. We have 52% of roadway departure crashes, and that can be for numerous reasons. So, ice and snow, poor visibility, distracted drivers. We can have avoidance maneuvers for wildlife that does naturally end up in a collision with wildlife. And then, any kind of overcorrection if you get your tire off the edge of the road and you're trying to get back on. So, the next slide here, we're going to take a peek at some of the pictures. This is kind of close-up of the pavement of Lincoln Way, and you can see all the different types of cracks that we have. We have edeline cracking, we have transverse cracking, linear block cracking. All of this really is related to what's underneath from previous widening. You can see where each of the slabs is of the concrete underneath. So, all of those areas are kind of just things that we need to fix where the water is starting to leach through. So, we had 18 total locations that were sampled during the coring that we did. The first section that we did was from US 30 to State Road 5, and that pavement thickness was a little over eight and a half to 12 and a half inches. And then, from State Road 5 to Casillas County, that is going to be the, we don't have quite as much, it's six and a half to about 7.8 inches. But as far as the distresses and common failures, it was pretty consistent between the two sections. Across the board, we're pretty fortunate that drainage is adequate, there's no major concerns with that. We do have to have a couple culverts replaced and a new structure, but those are included in the estimate that we have here. And then, any bridge improvements? We're going to be reviewing the bridge inspection before, I believe, on December 7th. So, we'll know what that entails, but that's not included in the same project if there is anything needs addressed with that. So, these are some of the results from the corings. And really consistently, in all of those 18 locations, from about three inches down to anywhere to seven inches down, there is one or two different layers where you see debonding. So, whether or not that's related to some sort of deficiency in the mix, it's related to water infiltrating through a crack and getting down in there. But it has broken up an entire layer or two in some areas of that pavement's makeup. So, when we discussed this with the Heritage Research Group, they told us to think of it that anything above where that debonding is, is what's carrying all the way to your traffic. So, even if we have 13 inches of pavement, if there's that debonding at three inches, we only have three inches of pavement that our traffic is traveling on. So, that continues to just be jeopardized by that debonding that's at the... So, in looking at the construction comparison costs and the actual process comparison costs, it says alternative two, because the first alternative is to do nothing, which we'll have to do something eventually. So, really, that's, it's not really an alternative. But the second alternative is some pulled-up patching, and then, to take one and a half inches off the surface and to lay one and a half inches back out with hot mixed asphalt. That's the lowest-cost alternative, but it really is a really super short-term minimal effort remedy. Alternative three is the one that the Heritage Research Group actually advised to us, and I'll explain that a little bit more in depth here. Alternative four was take five and a half inches off the top and replace five and a half inches back out with hot mixed asphalt. And then, alternative five is a complete reconstruction. So, the option of four, the reason that they said that this one would be the most feasible, actually, no, I'm sorry, option four is the one they said it would not be feasible. One of the things with this one is that we would have to completely remove the five and a half inches, and it wouldn't be laid back out immediately. So, we would have five and a half inches missing from our pavement surface that we would have to account for driveways and business and things to get to and from. And then, we have the big drop-off on the traveling lane, and the road closures would be for an elongated period of time. And then, for the hot mixed asphalt prices, the intermediate, which would be laid in the center, is $15,000 a ton, and we would need about 123 tons of that, which is just for material alone, just for that hot mixed asphalt is about $1.9 million. So, the concrete that we have below, they said it was a considerably suitable condition. So, we don't really want to go with the reconstruction option, because that literally, we would have to take 16 inches across the board off of the top. And that is considerably expensive to replace. We would be looking at about $12 million alone just for construction costs and not dealing with anything else. That would just be construction and materials. So, in looking at some of the options, if we opt to not seek federal aid for this, obviously, we have to do something in the near future anyways. It just depends on whether or not we're going to be putting the entire bill, whether or not we go with the federal aid process and hopefully be awarded 80% of what this project will be cost or will cost, and the county contributes the 20%. And then, George did ask about community crossings. Community crossings, the maximum that we can receive for that is $1.5 million. So, that's not really a feasible option for us at the cost expense of this project here. And then, I know that with, Brad, you had spoke to, was it NDOT or some of the other agencies?
I spoke with the city of Columbus, Indiana, as well as the highway. Both of them had some of the great things to say about both states. Columbus, they had a similar construction, came open asphalt with excessive cracking. It's all the same, and to say that their project was... A couple of cracks where it's more than 50%. So, to have those results with that type of... In similar situation with Fulton, they didn't have concrete on their road. It was heavily cracked, and they decided they are as well. And their construction project, they said that this summer they couldn't find a crack to seal it. Three years ago.
So, like I specified, if we don't do any sort of federal aid, we will still need to address some sort of repair with the road, which would likely be paving within the next two or three years. So, we could use community crossings money for that. We would be looking, this year, our cost was about $104,000 a mile. Lincoln Way is about 10 miles. So, that's a really big chunk of money there. And then, community crossings is a 75-25. So, we would still be paying a little bit more for our contribution for that portion. And this does not also include any of the additional safety improvements that we're planning on putting in place with this federal aid project. So, we're looking at widening the shoulder and having a paved shoulder rather than just an aggregate shoulder. We would have thermoplastic striping done that's actually recessed into the pavement. Thermoplastic is a little bit more expensive, but it does last anywhere from eight to 10 years rather than our paint only lasting about a year and having to be re-striped. We have a complete sign replacement that we're planning on doing with this, and this is sign posts and all signs to make sure they're proper size and reflectivity, and then, replacing our small structure in some of the culverts. So, that is kind of the summary there. So, I wanted to kind of just show you guys a little bit more about what the Fulton Police Recycling is. It literally is recycling old pavement that was there. So, with the process, they anticipate taking about an inch and a half off the top first, and that will be basically disposed of. But then, the five and a half inches that they would be recycling, it will be milled up, it will be processed through a screener and a crusher, or be mixed back with the Heritage Research Group's design of emulsion, and then, it will be paved back out onto the road. And the next slide has a video. I don't know if the commissioners weren't really interested in watching it. It's, you don't have to watch it either, but it's kind of just more of a detailed depiction of what the actual process is. But it's literally just paving, but with the actual road surface being reused, which eliminates a lot of the cost for materials.
It starts to finish all with the same.
Yes, aside from the inch and a half that they would then come put on the top, that would be new asphalt. But this eliminates also the lot of the issues that we would see if we were just to completely mill it and replace it with all-new asphalt. But this literally is just one train that picks it up and lays it down. So, there's not going to be that big difference between lanes as far as height of pavement and things of that nature. As far as the requirements and impacts go, we're really fortunate, because this particular road has a really wide right-of-way, because it was a past state road. So, we have 100 feet, which is 50 on either side. We really don't have any kind of setbacks. There's nothing, there's no structures in the way. We don't anticipate having to relocate any utilities at all. There's really minimal permitting that's going to need to take place in this particular project. But it's really quite a small impact when you look at it as a whole.
Katie, there's a bridge down there on Lincoln Way West, past the gun shop or the bake shop.
Yes.
That have to be reworked?
I'm hoping that when we have our bridge inspection meeting on December 7th, that they'll be able to give us some more information on an up-to-date condition of that bridge. But as of right now, I am not able to answer that question from our most recent inspection. That is not included in the project, but it also has its own separate set of funds if that does mean to have something done with it. But this particular project, the estimate that they did give us calls for a replacement of the guardrail and the things that are around those structures, just not the structure themselves.
So, there's a culvert, not to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Listed in the report too, that they said needs to replace. So, that's not in this bid either?
In the breakdown of the cost estimate, it is. It is considered a small structure, and they did actually include it in the cost estimate, the detailed one. But I assume also that that will come up. We had our small structures inspected this year. I don't know that they're finished yet, but I assume that that will come up in that project as well. So, for the breakdown of the cost estimate from 2023 to 2027, which would be the year of construction, everything is kind of broken down there. The year of construction, obviously, is going to be the most expensive year, where the most funding will be allocated to. But when it comes down to it, we're looking at about a $9 million project with the county contributing $1.8 million. So, it's an 80-20%. And also, in the estimate that they gave us, they did account for a 5% inflation factor. But again, this is going to be shoulder upgrades, replacing our small structure, the culverts, new pavement markings, complete sign replacement, and taking into account all those safety factors that we're trying to implement to reduce some of our roadway departures and other crashes that we have in the area. So, our funding sources don't really need to be determined at this time. I know that that would be something that would be much more reassuring as far as to have that set in stone, but I feel that that is a conversation that needs to take place across multiple facets. And I did discuss with the commissioners that moving forward, I do think that it would be wise to have a group of individuals, including the auditor and the treasurer, our department, potentially engineering commissioners and councilmen, who sit down and decide where would be the most suitable area for the funding to come from. But there's a couple of suggestions there, but obviously, I do not know all of the funding availability and what they can be used for. I know what the highways are and anticipate utilizing some of those. But one thing that I do want to make sure of is that I don't overcommit the highway funds and short us in turn then on what our actual roadway plans are from year to year in other areas. So, any questions?
Could you go back a slide, please? Okay, so, right now, you're going to need 1.8.
So, with the federal process, the federal aid is a reimbursement portion. So, Beth is able to explain that process in detail a little bit more. But really, what we're looking at is we would be paying that portion, but then, we are reimbursed by the federal government. So, when it comes down to it, the only contribution financially that would not come back to the county is that one.
Time to give more of the community crossing money can be used?
Community crossing money could be used, but it would only be on a much, much smaller scale, because the maximum that you can receive for community crossings is 1.5 million. And that is only a 75-25%. So, we receive 75% from the state, and then, we receive, or we contribute 25% of our own money. Yes. Construction dollars, so it would only be the fifth line there that would be covered. So, none of the engineering or utility or inspection or any of that stuff would be covered by the community.
Two-foot paved shoulders. Is that because the road needs to be a little wider or just...?
It's more of a safety, kind of a safety implementation. Whenever you have people who tend to drift off the road, and I think that in this, there's also rumble strips included in there as well. I'll have to double-check on the itemized. But just kind of that low-cost implementation of the rumble strips, and then, giving people another area where they can correct. It's proven that that is, increases the likelihood that someone will be able to get back on the road rather than to depart the lane off into the field or the woods or wherever it may be.
Kind of, in kind of old water?
Just on the edges, not on the center lines.
Chad, I have a question for you. Is, can ARPA money be used for this?
My concern with using or committing ARPA is that ARPA has to be spent by 2026. So, I didn't know if there was a way to expedite the plan, in which case, you know, you could certainly commit ARPA dollars, and then, as long as it's committed by the end of next year and spent by the end of 2026, then there is that possibility.
Does it have to be spent or just allocated to be spent?
I don't think there's any possible way we could have it expedited and completed before our finances had to be spent from our part. I had the same thought, but I don't think realistically it would work.
So, that being known, and being known that we're going to build a new jail, where do you think we're going to come up with this money?
Well, as we discussed in the commissioner meeting, we do have five years to budget the funds. So, if we're, you know, if we're saving, putting money back for that 1.8 million, I think it can be attainable.
But essentially, you have to come up with 9 million first, right? And then, get almost all of it back? Because of what, right? That's my concern.
It's revolving.
It's revolving, but these are revolving. And you're using money that you spent and then getting it right back to pay your next invoice?
Yeah.
So, no one's asking for council to come up with the 9.1 million?
I'll just make sure, because I've seen reimbursable grants. We're still two years behind, we've not received any funds on. So, I just want to verify from my seat how fast those funds will be reimbursed. That'd be great.
And also talked about, too, applying those ARPA funds in censures that would normally maybe come out of County General and then, maybe earmarking County General money as a way to circumvent our money towards a project like this.
Yeah, and that's still being explored. I'm not sure, I'm not sure right now with ARPA. There's a lot of unknown questions that Matt contacted, Matt Eckertley at Eckertile, and asked some questions. So, Matt Shipman contacted Matt Eckertley and had some conversations. So, there's some unknown with ARPA. ARPA, in my opinion, is a pain in the neck. In some ways, I wish we didn't even get it. I think it's ridiculous. But it's a lot of red tape to cut through and figure out how to spend it. So, I don't know. I don't know the answer. I don't know that anyone does.
Chad, we're dedicating so many dollars of CEDAT funds for the jail project, right?
Yeah, that's right.
And we look for that to be over, when's the end of that construction? Do you think now, 23, 24, middle of '25?
End of construction of the jail, I would say 25, 26.
But then, we might have some CEDAT funds freed up.
Yeah, so, with the bond sale, the CEDAT money, the last I heard, I believe, we have to we have to commit $625,000 annually, year over year. But our actual spend is only going to be like 120 of that. But for the bond sale to be attractive, we're just committing more of that, which we take in 1.2 million in CEDAT dollars annually now. So, you're basically saying you'll commit half of what you take in for CEDAT, but the spend is much, much less. So, then, we'll realize that the next year, when we didn't spend nearly as much from CEDAT as what was allocated, there'll be a lot left over.
It's a bond backup.
Yes, that's right.
The payments are going to be made.
Yes.
The process of grinding this up and laying it back down, that's quite a machine. Is there a lot of companies that have that, so the bidding on that will be competitive? Or are we out here? And I don't know if that's a special machine, does that limit the number of companies that have it that would bid on the project?
This isn't something that's a project that's singular to any particular area. It's kind of a widespread.
I didn't know if there's other companies that we'd have.
No, I am not able to name the names of the companies who have that kind of capability. But NDOT does this, NDOT just did this actually while they have the milling machine. But really, because of the different types of equipment to go through it, it's, there's a lot of different companies that have the ability to do it. It's just the availability and any kind of a timeline that you're going out to 2027, and then, it would be, I think, letting would be, how far out with letting from after the actual engineering is completed? So, I mean, talk goes through the construction of community that a project of that nature is going to come forward, and I'm sure, but there's several different agencies, not agencies, but companies rather, that do that type of thing.
So, they do it, do they do it on-site? Or is it taken to the plant and then, reworked back into the new product coming back?
They can do it both ways, but this particular one is on-site. If you want to watch the video, you're more than welcome to. But literally, that, the actual photo that you see there, that's the whole process there.
I understand the concept, because that's what they just did on US 30, is they recycled quite a bit of it, but it went back to the plant. They'd take it and dump it at the plant, pick up a new load, and then, it would be recycled in and processed there, not actually on-site. So, it's...
Yeah, this one, actually, they have a mobile, sometimes it's called a pug mill or whatever, whatever places want to call it. But it goes in, it mix, the crusher and the screener, and then, it goes and it mixes with the emulsion, goes through the pug mill, and that's where it mixes it. And then, the conveyor takes it up to the paper and puts it in the paper, just like any kind of a... I don't know, dump it into a paper, and then, it just lays back down.
So, it's a lot less product that's being recycled, is what you're saying?
And this five and a half inches would be 100% just recycled material?
Yeah, I'd guess, or the volume that they do on a project like 30 a day, that's why this machine probably works automatically. That's why they take it to the plant, have how many trucks moving at one time That's why this machine probably would work on that because that's why they take it to the plant, have how many trucks moving at one time. Because of, strictly because of the volume, but this machine is a smaller project.
They indicated that this particular process, you should have anywhere from 15 to 20 years before you need to do anything to your roadway surface. But it's basically, it's basically what you would consider a new road. So we would have six and a half inches of new pavement on top of pavement that's still good, where there's not any kind of a, we don't have any of that stripping or any of the breakdown that we saw in some of the pines. Everything that's below that is, is
So your, your best knowledge going forward. When would the other part be done, would have to be done from where you stopped to, to the county, Costco County line?
Really, I think that that could be up to the county itself. I assume that if we would try to achieve another federal aid award, um, for that second portion. But ultimately it would be the same thing. That's why we opted to do the full 10 miles for the engineering assessment at once. And they came up with a design and a solution that would really be across the board instead of just for one segment at a time. So we won't have to go through this portion of it. Again, we already have the information that we need. We have the data that we need. We would just be able to hopefully move forward with applying for another federal aid award with the same plan that we're doing for this one. So 2027 being completed, if we felt like we needed to take a breather before we move forward with the next federal aid contribution for local match, then wait a few years and then maybe try for the second one. But, but that would be the plan is to just get one done and try to do the second whenever we're.
Did the boring samples look the same?
Yes.
Even though, even though the other one was done later.
The only thing that, that looks a little bit different with the boring samples, that the second portion don't have quite as thick of pavement. So on the first area that we're looking from Columbia City Limits to about 350, I think the, the depth, the deepest depth of that pavement was 13 inches. Where when we get to the second half, or no, I'm sorry, it was up till State Road 5. That's where the poring was. And then from State Road 5 to Cosi Osko County Line, I think it was maybe nine inches was the deepest that it went. So there's more pavement below the surface that's on top of that concrete. And I don't know, I don't know the reason for that. But, but that really is, is the only difference.
Council have any more questions?
So you said we really need to set up an account and then it'd just be a revolving door, take money in and out? Okay. So would, you have any idea how much money we need to start with in there? Because we surely don't need the 1.8 because it's over a five year period, right?
Well, like that 1.8 would be
Okay.
We probably have to prove that we have the 1.8 available or will have it.
So it sounds like Chad and, and Jim are pretty confident we might have some CEDA money to work with there for that. Maybe?
I mean, I, I believe we, I, I believe we will, but I
You don't, I know, but there's a, there's a possibility.
Yes, sir.
And we can also, when we do our budgets every year, there's, there are suitable expenditures for some of the accounts that highway has that we may be able to budget for as long as it's not detracting from the amounts that we're putting towards our actual road program. But these are expenditures that are more than suitable for our MBH funds and our MBH restricted funds that we have.
Any other questions?
Time frame of this grant? I mean, how, how soon do we have to?
The deadline's the end of this month. That's why I requested this special meeting. Beth and I were hoping to have the application completed and submitted this week.
Does the application need to include a financial commitment letter?
It's a requirement. Yes. There are some where the, the financial contribution letter is just a plus, but this one is I don't, we wouldn't really have to have it set up until
Call us a letter of commitment.
Time frame of when grant, those grants are
They were awarded last year when I was at road school. People were being notified of being awarded community crossing funds and federal aid funds. Which gives us time to put money in, in the pot to be able to spend in longer years.
If federal government changes the program and then the funds aren't available after we've committed to it with the, with the construction.
That's a great question. Has that ever happened before? These, these federal dollars are allocated for this specific purpose, so I don't know that it could change.
Any other questions for Katie or the commissioners? If not, or entertain a motion.
I move we approve the commitment. Called this project. To apply for the grant.
I would second that and giving our vice president the authority to sign that letter of commitment.
Will we all got to sign it?
We all do?
Yes.
I wanted it to just be you.
I don't think so. Yeah, I got a first and a second. Further discussion. If not, I'll take a vote. All them signify that they want to go with it, please raise your right hand. All them opposed and saying, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work.
The sign moving forward.
You might want to set up a piggy bank out there.
I will.
Start baking pies or something.
You know, Chad, you made comments earlier about yeah, you, on this grant, you get money, but it also costs you money. And I, I agree with that. And I had told Katie, I met, I met with Katie this morning and looked over this with her. And I think, I think this is something we need to really keep track on and see. See how good this, this grant works and everything. I, I've told her about the history I had with the bridge at Blue Bell. When I walked in to commit, they had applied for a federal grant 80 20 by the time we got it all done and so forth. And then we had to bid minority and that bid twice because the bids were so high that we'd paid for initially ourselves. We'd have, we got, would have got the bridge a lot cheaper. And that, so this would be a good, good experience for us to go through this grant and really keep track to see, see how good it works for future grants. So I, I, it'd be good, I think.
Why they're signing that? Anybody have anything in the audience? If not, we'll stand adjourned.